Ready? Almost.
Oh crap.
I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission for March 6, 2025, on Thursday at 7:00 PM. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall Rayford?
Here.
Mr. Stokes?
Here.
Mrs. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Sasek?
Here.
Ms. Julinski, here. Chairman DeHunt?
Here. Moving on, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So approved.
Whoops, go ahead.
We have motion by Ms. Moody and we have support by Mr. Sasek, or Ms. Rayford. We have a second and a third. We're covered.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Moving into the first hearing of the public, you have three minutes to speak. Podium is yours. Please write your name on the piece of paper. Should hopefully, is there paper up there?
No, but it's all right. Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. First thing, I just wanted to thank you for going back and reviewing the October minutes and getting that all straightened around. The other thing that I kinda was, wanted to talk about was you have on the agenda figure out a way to, figure out a way to preserve their parking without impact impacting safety negatively. The way I'm understanding it is right now, the one business on Nine Mile, Mr. and Mrs. Chini, they have parking in front of their store where the width currently is seven feet. MDOT's requirements are eight feet, but our city ordinance is nine feet. So AEW is able to do, do their parking so that they would have the eight-foot width, which is in line with MDOT's requirements. So I don't know if it's still an issue where the city needs to adjust their ordinance to be the same as MDOT's for that particular one. The other issue is the East Detroit Bakery with their parking. Their drive aisle, I believe, is 15 feet right now, but our city ordinance is saying that for that type of parking, it should be 18 feet. MDOT says that 15 feet is good enough. So again, some of the parking was redesigned to allow them to keep all of their parking in front of the business, and it still complies with MDOT and their safety. So again, I don't know if Planning Commission has to do anything, change the ordinance, make a variance, to agree with MDOT and help those businesses keep their parking. Both of those businesses have been around for decades, and so I feel that, you know, it's important for us to try and help them preserve their parking. So that's it. I'm sure you'll be addressing it since that's the only thing on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else in the audience, I think we're just gonna close the first hearing of the public. We will move on to the approval of the minutes, but I want to start with the January 2nd meeting first. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the January 2nd meeting, please?
I move to approve the minutes from January 2nd.
We have motion?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Oh, please let the record show me. Commissioner Naylor's here. Sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, give a little bit of history about the special land use for 22100, Grasset.
Is this in regards to?
To the minutes of the October 3, 2024 meeting?
Well, funny that you do that because I was going to ask for some public clarity in the record, so have at it.
Okay, so historically, on June 6 of 2024, the special land use was on the agenda but was tabled to July by this planning commission. Our July 11, 2024 meeting was canceled for lack of quorum. The item was not on the August and September meetings as there were some violation issues by the applicant that needed to be resolved. Those were resolved on October 3 of 2024. The special land use was approved with conditions. However, the minutes for that meeting mistakenly included conditions to require public parking and to exclude all vehicles related to the business. On January 2, those incorrect minutes were approved by PC, by this commission. Meanwhile, in November, council had approved the special land use with incorrect additions. It was noted by one of our esteemed residents about the discrepancy. What we are asking tonight is that this commission would approve the amended minutes, as seen in the record, to remove the requirement, it was formally labeled as number three, I've renumbered them, to require a 10% public parking requirement. That was removed by this commission. There was language about the parking of vehicles that included the parking of inoperable vehicles, not just vehicles associated with the business, but that was actually reflected in the council minutes. So the real issue is this, this 10% public parking requirement. We need this council, this commission, to approve those minutes and then so that it can be brought back, if approved, for recommendation to City Council. I will allow the, well, I will allow the building official to comment that we are still having, we have some issues with the applicant being in violation. So unfortunately, this, this mistake by our, our former contractor is not helpful to our cause, but Mr. Myers, did you want to explain?
Well, if I may, before we turn to Mr. Myers. So are you telling me that City Council cannot act without us approving the minutes?
Per the city attorney, it is more, it is proper that, let him talk.
I think that the appropriate course of action is approving the revised minutes tonight. I believe that this issue then is gonna come back before the City Council, once these, these minutes have been approved, related back to the October Planning Commission meeting. I believe then the City Council is gonna be taking, they're, one of the members is gonna make a motion for reconsideration, so the correct record can be considered and then they will act accordingly.
So if this body approves the minutes tonight, what meeting? Will it be on the very next meeting?
I believe that's the plan right now, Ms. Holman.
If I could, if I could interject on that, I would be willing to request that it be placed on the next agenda as, as a councilperson present today.
Mr. Chair, I did have a conversation with Councilperson Pushad Lake and Mayor Kleinfeld earlier today about that very thing. And so then I did speak with Mayor Kleinfeld after the three of us had talked approximately hour and a half ago. And he did indicate that that was the plan and would probably be on for the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Myers, you had additional input?
If you remember, after the Planning Commission approved the parking space and the plan that we're going to do, they, prior to that meeting, up to that meeting and through the council members, the council meeting's approval of the minutes, they blocked off the property as was requested because we're required not to have any gravel parking, and it would violate our Eagles' violation of possible damage of soil erosion and problems with damaged vehicles and leakage into the soil. So they did it, they left it off, they famed it, they kept everything off, but two weeks after council approved the minutes, they began to open it back up and begin to park. We gave them a citation, one a week until we got tired of that, and now we're at three a week, and we have the approval of our minute, of our, of our motion, of our ordinance, and we now have the right to do it. We have had it that way, we haven't done it, we haven't activated it, we've confirmed it with our attorney, and if they don't soon choose to clear them, we'll do one ticket a day for every house, every picture we have of them violating the rule that they agreed to stay off of, to get your approval to do the parking space. And once they got your approval, council's approval, they went back to using the property. So we've now been taking a photograph, proving our position, and then writing a citation, and we'll now accelerate that even more until we get in front of the judge or get in front of the council of the court, and we'll be asking the court not to rescind any of the, of the tickets because they consciously have viol, they've done everything to get your approval and counsel. As soon as you got it, they went back to the practice of illegally parking when we've asked not to, on two levels of concern. One, we have an ordinance that says you can't park on gravel spaces, and two, we have concern because we had a contact call from Eagle concerning about the leakage into a soil without a hard surface. So there's the action plan that we're now taking to get their attention to make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Well, and now you've got a big mud mess.
That is correct.
All right, so I'm gonna defer to Ms. Moody, Ms. Naylor, and Ms. Julinski. Do you feel comfortable approving these minutes, as you were all in attendance at the meeting?
I'm comfortable with Mr. Albrecht's recommendation.
Ms. Moody?
I'm comfortable as well with his recommendation.
Ms. Naylor? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, if I could just, I actually went back and watched and listened to the meeting, that section of the meeting that covers this, and then I went through the minutes that are proposed for this evening, and they're, they're not verbatim, but minutes aren't required to be verbatim, but they certainly encompass the intent of what was voted on that night.
All right, so I'd like, if I, if I may, I'd like you to read the motion, then we'll let the commissioners second, and so.
It would be a motion to approve the revised minutes of the Planning Commission meeting conducted back on October 3, 2024.
Do we have somebody willing to make that motion?
Motion.
Self-motion. Approved.
We have motion and support.
And support.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall Rayford? Mr. Stokes? Mr. Sasek?
I also have to abstain, I wasn't on the commission at that time.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Chairman DeHunt?
I'm abstaining as I was on. So the motion passes. There you go.
Thank you.
Go at them. Moving on to new business, please. Item A, do I def?
Did you get approval for the minutes?
Oh, yes, we did. So shall I defer to Mr. Myers or Mr. Kern for item A? Mr. Kern, you're on deck.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item was brought up at the council meeting here this week as well. Nine Mile project is now underway, under construction. There's still a couple parking issues that we're trying to address, and I think we're getting close to coming to a resolution on those items. There's two locations in particular where there does need to be an ordinance change or a variance in order to make the park, parallel parking or the angled parking that's being proposed work. The first location is at the East Detroit Bakery. At the East Detroit Bakery, currently, there's 60-degree angled parking, has 11 parking spaces in the frontage of the property, and there's a 15-foot-wide drive aisle between the back of the curb of the roadway and the parking area. We looked, originally, we were looking at converting that angled parking into parallel parking in order to have proper width for the drive aisle and to provide some green space in front of there, but by doing that, that would reduce the number of parking spaces from 11 to 6 in front of this property. So we looked at some other alternatives. One alternative was to potentially extend the parking area so that it matches up with the parking lot on the west side of the bakery and eliminate the driveway approach, the center driveway approach there, but by doing that, it would only add a couple more parallel parking spaces. So you wouldn't, you still wouldn't have the, wouldn't be able to match the 11 parking spaces. So the other option that we looked at was to preserve the 11 parking spaces as there, basically reconstruct what's there now, but the drive aisle would only be 15-foot wide, and per the city ordinance, for 60-degree angled parking, the drive aisle is a minimum of 18 feet. So the request would be to either, whether you change the ordinance or do a variance just for that specific property to allow for a 15-foot-wide drive aisle at that location. We did also look at 30-degree angled parking at that location, which would, which would allow for a proper drive aisle, but again, the way that's angled, it would only allow for, I think it was seven or eight parking spaces, you still wouldn't be able to get enough parking spaces. The second issue happens to be in, on the south side of Nine Mile, between Rain and Cushing, there's an area between the street and the sidewalk that's used for parking that's only seven foot wide currently. The city's ordinance for parallel parking, minimum width is nine feet. MDOT and many other cities allow for eight feet. We can, we've looked at the, this location several different times to see how we can make parallel parking work, and we can do that as long as we get enough right-of-way, which talking with the property owner that we've been discussing with, that we would need right-of-way from, we don't have the, the right-of-way is kinda janky in that area where some of the properties, the right-of-way goes right up to the front of the buildings, some properties it goes to the center of the sidewalk. So on this one property in question, we would need additional right-of-way up to the building, which that property owner is willing to grant if we get parallel parking there. If we get that right-of-way, we would be able to fit an eight-foot-wide parallel parking space, which would require to cut the, we'd have to cut one foot back into the existing sidewalk in order to make that work. But our recommendation there would be to change the ordinance from nine feet to eight feet, which is the typical for a parallel parking space, and I have a feeling we're probably gonna run into that problem again when we do Phase 3 design. We may have that same issue too in order to fit, to fit parallel parking. We may only have eight feet to work with. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Chairman DeHunt? Mr. Kern, so we're talking about the south side of the, of Nine Mile, but aren't we gonna run into the same situation on the north side of Nine Mile where you have Wingstop and a few of the businesses right by them also that have parallel parking in front of their businesses on Nine Mile?
The only look in the current phase, the current phase of Nine Mile from Grasset to Tuscany, there were, there were a total of three areas where there were parking issues, the two that I've mentioned already on the south side, and then there was one on the north side, in the block that you're talking about where the Detroit Wing Company and a couple other businesses are on the north side between, I forget which streets those are, it's in Tuscany and Lambrecht, I believe it is. We are able to put five parallel parking spaces in there, and we've worked with the property owners there as well, and we've agreed to that, and been able to make that work. I don't know if Rich wants to add to that at all, but.
Thank you.
Yes, there was, there was a lawsuit that was filed against the city regarding one of the property owners along, that owned several pieces of property on the north section in this general vicinity. The city was able to work out a settlement agreement with that property owner, and the resolution included an easement for two additional parking spaces in that area, and that easement has been submitted to the registered deeds for recording, and that lawsuit has been dismissed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to note that the circumstances were very different in that situation because there actually was a permanent easement for two of the spaces in front of the property on the north side, and then there's a much greater width from the, from the street, in the right-of-way from the street to the building. So that was, that was the reason for the lawsuit, because of the permanent eas, was it easement?
Yeah, it was a permanent parking easement.
Permanent parking easement.
Early 70s.
Correct. Unlike many of the others, in the early or late 60, 69, 70s, the city went through and there was a lot of purchasing of right-of-way and easements for the widening of Nine Mile. And so as part of this Nine Mile project, the city has been going through and trying to identify, or identifying exactly where the right-of-way and easements are, and then as necessary for this project, have been purchasing the, the additional feet necessary. It's, it's a balancing act.
Does anybody have any input before I open my big mouth?
Chairman DeHunt, if I, if I could also, with respect to this, this whole issue, I know that Councilperson Cardi DeMonico had requested that we discuss this because of the importance of it. It's not just those two businesses. As I recall, at prior council meetings, there was another resident, another business, and I can't remember the name of it, but it's a virtual place, I'm sure you guys are aware, and I know there, it's a virtual place.
The old Iron Ivy.
That's, that's a place, and they were having, he was having some issues, and he had to thwart us as well. So I don't believe that this is just a two-business item. So I guess what I wanna, wanna convey to everybody here on planning is our goal is to be in alignment with MDOT's requirements. So if we could consider that, from this group, it would be appreciated to, to be in compliance with MDOT's requirements at eight feet.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, sorry, just one clarification. The virtual business does have a vacant lot behind their business that is part of their business that, I don't believe council's aware of that, that is their parking lot. So, you know, we're happy to provide any information, but that particular business does have an entire parking lot behind them. But yes, it is a, it is an ongoing, sorry, it is an ongoing issue.
You know, it was just another one that I had thought of off the top of my head. I know he has come to the hearing of the public at, at several council meetings. I can't think of his name right now, and I, like I said, I'm blanking on the business, but suffice it to say it's on Nine Mile, and there could be potential other businesses on Nine Mile, so of course, we do value our Nine Mile businesses that are there, and as such, I would request that this group consider the ordinance change.
Does anybody have any thoughts, feedback? I, personally, you know, there was, there was this hope that everybody was gonna start going to these really fuel-efficient cars and everybody's gonna have these little dinky cars. Well, I'm here to tell you, it ain't happening. Ford doesn't make a passenger car anymore, they're all SUVs. I have a truck, and it is not easy to park sometimes. And I rather like what Mr. Myers has said, why do we need to be like other people when we can chart our own course? In this respect, I think MDOT is wrong. But having said that, I don't see there's any reason why we can't offer variances to people and still keep our nine-foot standard. And if it becomes an onerous hindrance, they can ask for a variance and make their case, and they'll probably get it. But I, I, I think honestly that MDOT is mistaken in this. I think nine feet is, is, is fine. It's never harmed us in the past until Nine Mile, and I've not heard of any other businesses complaining about it, so I would rather keep the nine foot than ask people to come for a variance if it becomes an onerous situation. So if anything, I think the spots need to be wider too, because we got wide people getting out of some cars.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I'd, I'd add to that conversation. Again, I, I don't think we even, I think Ryan and his team can give us the list of realistic need for variances on those. But even if the council felt that it was advocate for the businesses to change to MDOT's standard, I would encourage it to be just for Nine Mile and leave the zoning structure for the rest of our city where it is until we see need for that variance. This commission does this on a regular basis where it has the right and the authority to write variances for size of, of parking, a number of parking spaces, more or less, as well as the spaces. So it makes prudent sense until we find out really how many, and how many need it on Nine Mile, by the time we get to the second half of it as well, how many really need a nine-foot variance to keep their parking spaces that they have presently versus an eight. And I don't see there's a real reason not to, but my concern would be, until we get through the Planning Commission, I mean, until we get through the next planning master plan and take a look at the next design of where we'll take the city over the next five years to throw that, what that brings us, and Ryan will explain that if I can get this at 30 degrees or, or other degrees, I can get the same-sized parking lot, I might lose one or two more spaces, but I will get a safer entry and exit at 18 feet space between them with larger vehicles. And right now, we're not seeing that small miniature vehicle being the medium of our, of our industry. So I would support the idea that if we have to make the variance by council's request to go the, the standard of meet MDOT for the, the repair and the redoing of, of Nine Mile, I could support that, but it would be easier for us to suggest that if there's a need for a bakery or another facility to maximize the potential of parking, we would variance that number of parking to eight for that address.
You know, and, and I was, I've been thinking about this, and it's just trying to park sometimes when you have a larger vehicle is an absolute nightmare. So that, that's, that was my only concern. I'm certainly not trying to be an obstructionist, but we've, we make accommodations often for people, and I think we would do it normally.
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's not even citizens driving. If you notice, if you haven't noticed lately, the delivery vehicles today are much larger, the, the Amazons. And they aren't necessarily the quality drivers you'd anticipate them to be when they try to find a way to park that machine. And so that's why I think part of those things that are planning to go to a nine-foot in our particular situation was prudent. But I do support the idea that if it's needed, we should be of a waiver to that organization so we can maximize and well-keep their safety there. The bigger the vehicle, however, the bigger the door, the bigger the door, the wider the swing is to get in and out of that door. And so you have to pay attention to those, but we're not even talking about just customers, we're talking about delivery vans are pretty large because that's the route we're going, and they don't always drive as well as private-owned vehicle personnel.
We also need to take into account too, we are in the age of, in the few retail locations that we do have, we are in the age where people don't buy a lot of inventory upfront, they're getting multiple deliveries in a week, whereas years ago, you'd get one delivery for a week and that was it. Now you're getting multiple deliveries because people are turning inventories faster. So, you know, there's a lot more trucks out there, and they're not small. Does anybody have any other feedback?
So this isn't, it's regarding parking spaces, but my particular thing is, is the garage I park in for work. They shrunk the spaces, and now you're literally on top of each other and sometimes have to crawl out your other door to get out of your vehicle. So no, I think a variance per business is a smarter idea, especially since we are doing the master plan and don't know the future yet. My opinion.
Anyone else?
I think it should be variance-based. When we've had other businesses come before us with parking structures or parking challenges, as we've said in the past, we just issue some variance for that particular business. I don't think we should make a global change. I think it should be per business. Again, like we said, we don't know what the rest of Nine Mile is gonna look like.
I agree with the individual variances as well.
So do I.
All right. There we go. Do we need to do anything?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend a motion to that effect.
All right, to recommend that we refer this back to City Council under the auspice that we would like to keep the nine-foot expectation, but we would offer variances as needed along Nine Mile?
That appears to be the planning commission's preference.
All right, would you care to verbalize this in a fashion that you find? All right. Would you care to verbalize this in a fashion that you find?
You just, actually you did.
You put it in legalese. I'll make the motion and somebody can support it. How's that sound?
Mr. Chair said it very eloquently. If you, if maker just wanted to say to, uh, motion to, uh, uh, recommend a council, what the chair just put in place on the record.
Okay. I make a motion that, uh, recommend to council the statements that our chair made.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall-Raifert?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Mrs. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski? Yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. So I'm assuming we don't need to talk about dry aisle requirements now? That has become moot? Or do we still need to talk about that?
It's the same thing.
It's all the same thing?
I would.
All right. You get home before eight o'clock. Moving on to the second hearing of the public. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the second hearing of the public. We will move on to comments. This might be the fastest meeting in a while. Uh, Councilwoman Pachadle.
Can I go last?
Okay. Uh, then we'll go to Mr. Myers.
Just want to give the council, uh, an update. We haven't been together for a little bit, but let me give you a couple of highlights. There are some concerns and questions with demolition of big boys. Um, we're getting a pushback, but we're not ending it there. They have a responsible limited time, uh, to remove pipes from their excavation and level that with a compaction. Uh, the other thing that was established at the beginning of the demolition is they needed a six-foot metal chain link fence to protect the property from misuse going forward. I've now spoken to the owner of the property and I have now written the final notice this week to the contractor of the extra, expect, the demolition. And citations will begin immediately if they don't make progress to pull a six-foot fence. I know we have road construction going in front of them and they're thinking that's an excusable period of time to pause. We've made it very, very clear that this needs to be gated so it doesn't become used inappropriately in storing cars, uh, hall, parking, having lunch, doing other mistakeable things. So we've required them to do that. We will stay on top of that until we see a six-foot fence across the front of that. Those driveways should not be accessible by anybody using walkable or, or driving a vehicle. Since I've, since it started, we have seen people just parking with dump, with, uh, um, hauling trucks and tow trucks and just parking them in there and, and walking away. That's got to end right away. So we've processed that. I've explained it to the, um, contractor. It is not the owner that has, uh, pulled the license. It isn't the owner that has pulled the permit. And so we'll be citation him until he and the owner figure out how they're going to put up a fence. I talked to the owner, uh, as of Tuesday. He said, uh, but this is, this is, this, and I said, this isn't a negotiable subject. We've come to this position and place. While you still have time to work out what you're going to put on the building and how you're going to revenue it, you need a fence and we won't take any other odds of than a six-foot fence across the entire property. So that's where we're going with that. The prime facility, as you may or may not have noticed, is completely cleared of its debris. The fencing is down. They have pulled a permit for construction of their dumpsters and closures and have met, are, are drawing approvals. And so we've given them their plan review. We've given them their, uh, certificate of occupancy. We have requested, because the last time we had the fire marshal in, we've asked the fire marshal and they now know he will go and do an inspection of the entire thing as a fire department. Uh, they have the right to be in annually anyhow. And so that, once that's done, we'll have his report. And that, uh, section of the property and project will be underway. I'm assuming the demolition, I mean, the building of the dumpster enclosure won't happen until the middle of this month with the weather, comes to spring. Uh, they do have, uh, plans. I have seen the preliminaries of, they're now trying to suggest it'll take them another two and a half months before they'll be ready for a site plan review, uh, on the south side. Uh, I've encouraged them, um, very economically that they should be here, uh, before we get to the summer so that they can begin to open ground on that property before the building season's over. And so hopefully we'll see them in, um, hopefully the first of May. And we'll begin to talk about what we can do to get that building moving from planning to engineering all the way up to a construction of a new building. So that's on that table. We have a couple of other issues, uh, that we're going. We've already talked about the gravel driveway and parking lot. Um, we had met with this, um, today, uh, with, uh, Sheets. Um, we are scheduling them to pull a demolition permit. Once they do that, we will have a pre-construction, pre-deconstruction program with DPW, uh, engineering and the building department and their construction, their deconstruction company. And we'll set the schedule for that. We are about seventy percent through their, their plan review. Um, it's about an eighty-page long event. And so, um, they've had a couple of violations, uh, which they always do. And, uh, but they won't have any problem fixing them. So by the time they have the building, uh, demoed, um, they'll be ready for their pre-construction meeting again with the three departments of the city. So they know exactly how they're going to start the construction of the Sheets building. Their plan is that they will open ground and break ground for a new building before this year is over. So that will be exciting. Once they get started, they won't be able to stop until they finish. So that's the goal. We're trying to press them to do that. Um, we are scheduling two other bigger events that you know. We're wrapping our heads around our new site, our new city planner who will start, uh, Monday morning. Um, but we have the condominium project, uh, out on the corner of, of Veronica. And they're looking for a couple of the details that our planner should be able to assist us with, to see if we can move them forward and get that ready. We'd like to see that project and also, um, be able to be open ground and being built and installed prior to, uh, this building season being over. The quad building, uh, has begun, uh, as of last Friday. And they're, according to their schedule, we'll find out how fast they get there to do their work, the engineering. But they project, uh, once that underground work and concrete work gets started, they should be done within twenty-eight days. So we'll see what that looks like. So by the time I get back to a planning commission, we might be having a ribbon cutting event, uh, within a week to after next council, uh, after next planning commission meeting. We're excited about that. So there's a number of things that we're really still excited about pushing. Um, the other parts of it, we're still cleaning up. We're working on over two hundred properties that are vacant. And we're cleaning and making sure we can see them, verify they're vacant, get them registered, and then get them in front of us as a, a new design of commercial satisfactory businesses. So there's a quick update of some of the things that we still are working on every week, uh, to keep moving forward. We are, um, excited about where we're going.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Um, we love Mr. Myers and all that he's been doing for the city. So, um, prime storage, of course, for those who don't know, is at Gresham Stevens. And then they have the new Stevens lot. Um, Sheets, of course, at, um, uh, Nine Mile and I ninety-four. Um, the new planner is actually, um, McKenna assigned us a, a planner with a bachelor's degree and no credentials. And with all of the, um, projects that are going on, um, I think we have forty-nine projects or something, but many new builds and new developments, um, we said that was not appropriate. So we have a new planner starting Monday, I believe. Um, he has many years of experience and, uh, ideally he will be able to meet some of the needs uh, of our different developments. We've been in contact with Genesis Chevrolet. They're looking for some changes and so, and so, um, tax incentives and things like that. Um, the Beaconsfield project is actually, um, townhouses?
Townhouses.
Um, at, on Beaconsfield and Veronica. Um, and CHN is the, um, units at, uh, Topher and Kelly. So with that going on and some of the new, uh, we have the projects that, Oakwood, um, the Pace projects. And so, um, we're, we're looking forward to working with, um, this assigned planner who has more expertise both in projects as well as in incentives and different, um, connections that can be made for, for these developments to move ahead.
Mr. Myers, if you don't mind in the next, going forward, can you make part of the agenda just a community update of projects that you are able to share information with?
And when I do, I'll bring you a document that you can track and follow.
Well, I think for the handful of people that may watch, I think it's, it's important to see and it would be nice not to have to read these horrific comments in the various face group, Facebook groups about what they think is going where and what's happening. So anything that we can do to be transparent and to share information that is shareable with the community, I think that we need to.
I'll make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Kern, do you have anything to say?
I'll just add that the quadplex at Kelly and Topher, they're supposed to start, they were supposed to start the underground work this week, but with the rain, it got delayed till next week. So they're starting on Monday with the storm sewer. Twenty-eight day clock will be starting.
Well, they already put the water in.
Well, that's true. They did do the water service and sewer service. I'll just add, you know, the Nine Mile project did start on Monday. The traffic switch took place on Monday. And, uh, they started milling the asphalt on the south side, which should have finished today, but the milling machine broke down. So it sounds like they'll be back on Monday to finish that. But then next week they'll be doing the storm sewer work, which will take about two to three weeks. And then they'll start the removal and, uh, replacement of the south side. But that, that project will be going till at least August. Um, and then we'll continue with the next phase next year. So fortunately a little bit of inconvenience here, but we'll have a new road soon.
Mr. Chair, as a layperson, if I may.
What, you want another bite at the apple?
What?
You want another bite at the apple?
Another bite. So, uh, get out of here. Um, just so people know, cause I do follow some of the comments that are being made. Nine Mile is a complete reconstruction. So it's all the infrastructure. It's the water mains, it's the cable, it's the gas, everything like that. And then it's complete reconstruction of, of, um, the entire road, like, like on the west side. So I, I see people not knowing what's going on, but it is an entire reconstruction of everything.
Yeah, I guess just to add, yeah, for that inconvenience, obviously it's been under construction for some time, but Consumers Energy was in there replacing the gas mains, which they're complete with all of their work, all the way across Nine Mile. Water main, replaced the water main in this current phase. And then this winter we'll be doing the last phase of water main and then next year. So at the end of next year, we'll be done with Nine Mile. So. Project. The water main. Yeah. And then obviously we've got the water main project going again. So we've got water main going in on Gresham as well, several residential streets. So, um, that contractor currently has four crews in town working to put in water main. Have that property done this year as well. So.
Anything else from over there? No? All right.
Sorry, uh, good evening.
Oh, there's another head over there.
My hair's not as great.
All right.
Normally you could have seen my hair, but.
Mr. McCain?
Yes. Uh, good evening, Chair and Commission. Um, just wanted to let you know about a couple of things. First of all, I hope you all received my email regarding the different training opportunities. Um, if you want help signing up with any of them or you have any questions about them, feel free to come see me after the meeting. I'd be happy to help you. And those are all, um, you know, free trainings or we have scholarships to different organizations to cover those. So there's no cost to you or the city. Um, one of the things, uh, that's newer this year from the economic development department is we're trying to kind of centralize a lot of different, um, resources and events and things that are happening. So there is actually, um, a news and events tab that's been added to the economic development department section of the website. Um, and in particular, I want to bring up, uh, in light of the construction on Gresham and Nine Mile. Um, you may remember in twenty twenty-three, we hosted a, uh, small business resource fair and kickoff for the modern nine project. So it's going to be kind of similar to that, except instead of having the, uh, presentation portion from the engineer and planner, this is just strictly a business resource fair. And that'll be on Wednesday, April thirtieth from ten AM to two PM here in City Hall. We've reached out to over, uh, thirty different business support organizations and we've gotten confirmations back from fifteen so far. So we're really excited about that. Another way to support our business during the construction. Um, Macomb County is continuing their, um, housing and, uh, community needs work. So they have a, uh, housing and community needs assessment kickoff on Thursday, March thirteenth from nine to eleven AM. Um, at the senior auditorium that they're building, um, on Dunham Road. So there are flyers, um, here in City Hall. And I can also send you out the flyer after the meeting. Um, and putting my rare head on for a moment, um, Rare is hosting a Battle of the Badges blood drive. Um, it's a competition between the police and fire department of East Point and Roseville. So if you're not squeamish and want to support a good cause, uh, definitely check that out. That's going to be on Friday, March twenty-eighth from twelve to six at Rare's building on Sickmore. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm pleased to report that, uh, Mr. Myers and I met with Judge Galen last month to talk about, uh, the amount of court time that we can get for prosecuting, uh, billing department cases. Historically, uh, billing department cases would oftentimes be included with, uh, criminal cases, traffic cases. And so, um, it was always challenging for me to devote enough time for the billing department cases and also the traffic and criminal cases on those days that I would be there prosecuting. And oftentimes it would be, uh, somebody from the billing department other than the department head that would be there representing the city. Um, and oftentimes that person would have to then call city hall to speak and get approval on various decisions. Uh, we came up with a plan now that, uh, building department cases will be, um, twice a month. And they will be scheduled on court days that are just building department cases. And so if we're there for an hour or if we're there for four hours, we, we will be able to use that entire block of court time, uh, in the afternoon devoted just to handling, uh, building department cases. I found in the past that these cases oftentimes take more time to work through and speak to the property owner or the representative. Uh, whereas a traffic, simple traffic case may take two, three minutes to resolve or a criminal case, if there's a defense attorney there, may take, you know, five minutes. Oftentimes billing department cases can take twenty minutes, maybe a half hour to resolve. And so, um, I'm really, really happy that this is going to be the process moving forward. And not only that, but Mr. Myers has dedicated, uh, his time. He will be the person from City Hall that will be there with me at court. So we won't have that, uh, you know, the need to call and, and find out if, you know, if there's been a correction of the violation. Uh, he and I will both be working hand in hand now moving forward. And again, the court is able to accommodate our requests that just building department cases will be scheduled for those, uh, courtroom slots. So I'm very happy. Um, and I think that you're going to see a rise in efficiency as well as, uh, getting these, uh, various code violations corrected in a timely fashion.
Mr. Stokes?
No comments.
Ms. Naylor?
It's good seeing everyone. Um, I just want to say, um, I really appreciate what you're doing. Getting everyone excited about building and construction here in, in the city of East Point. I'm really happy, John, to keep those things moving forward. That's all I have.
Mr. Sasek?
Uh, Mr. Myers, there's a, there's a few things that have been bothering me for quite some time. And regard, it's in regards to not only our businesses, but our residents. We have a number of ordinances, laws and that stuff within the city. And for this community to be able to move forward and be a nice community, we need everybody to take pride in their business and take pride in their residents. We also need somehow to get more code enforcement. I can think of a number of cases where we have businesses that have a total disregard to parking laws. We have residents that literally for three years have not moved their trash and recycling bin from the curb. And that's supposed to be done weekly and it hasn't moved in three years. We also have businesses that don't clean up around their property. We don't want to look like some slum area. We really want to be a beautiful city and it takes everybody. Planning commission can't do it, but the residents and the business owners need to take pride in what they're presenting to us. Thank you. That's all I have tonight. Ms. Raifert?
Paul Raifert?
Thank you. Chairman Hunt, I'm glad you had contacted me about the training. I've already signed up for the series. I'm looking forward to that. already signed up for the series. I'm looking forward to that. I personally like to have some knowledge of what I'm supposed to be doing, what I'm doing before I have to do it. So that worked out really well. There was a really interesting course in February that I missed because, of course, I didn't know about it. But, and the next one is not until April, but I'm looking forward to that. And hopefully, it will help me to be a greater asset to the planning commission. Thank you.
Ms. Moody?
Good evening. It's good to see everyone. I have to ditto everything Commissioner says exists in, everything. Because it's just horrendous of how our residents bombard or is when it comes to parking. It's just absolutely amazing. And not only that, to see the, the amount of abandoned cars is just, it's just amazing to me that you see so many cars that are on, on the street with no, they don't have tags. So you know that the car is abandoned. However, if we find ourselves a car, myself, with a valid tag, I will get a sticker on my car because they feel it's been sitting there so long, too long, because I don't drive it. But then you see one without a tag. They don't get anything. So, absolutely. So, yeah, Commissioner, I ditto everything that you said. Other than that, I have no comments. It's just a blessing to be here again.
Chairman Yulinski?
It's funny, Gary, that you brought that up because as I, I drive around, I've been thinking the same thing. And with spring coming, it's a time for renewal. And I, I, you know, it does. It takes a village and curb appeal is what I always say. And it's the residents that we need to implore. I get when, you know, the, the garbage people drop the garbage, when they're dumping the cans. Whosever job it is, if they don't do it, it's still your property. Your garbage cans. There's a time they're supposed to go out. There's a time they're supposed to come in. You know, I, I drive down my street and see a street full of garbage cans the next day, and it drives me out of my mind because it's so simple and, and so quick to, to take care of. So, yes, I, I think we need to be proud. And in order to be proud, our village needs to come together. And if you need help, reach out. There's plenty of people and resources, you know. There's just no reason for it. And, and you pay for an investment. So take care of your investment. And, you know, be proud of what you have. I'm glad you brought that up, Gary, because that's been on my mind. You know, as, as winter goes from winter to spring and ugliness, you know, and I, I, I get it. So, yes, reach out. Let's not use the resources of code enforcement. Hopefully, we're all adults. Take care of your things. Glad to see everyone tonight and thank you.
Councilman Pachadla?
I'd just like to reiterate the patience thing about Nine Mile. It's going to be quite the project. So I would hope that most residents are very patient. It's necessary. It's, that road is disastrous. So it definitely needs to be done. So patience is key. Secondly, I think that a lot of, a lot of residents and businesses thought that this was just going to be a rip out and replace type deal. And I think that that was very frustrating for so many business owners to see that, you know, changes had to be made and, and, you know, being in alliance with ordinances and whatnot. So it was very difficult. I would like to acknowledge our planning engineer, Ryan Kern, for taking the time and the opportunity to go to those businesses with council people to, you know, check that out, to try and make accommodations to help our businesses. Because we clearly want to keep the businesses that we do have here. And, you know, those couple that we were mentioning today, you know, have been here for quite some time. The Chicanes have been here for a very long time. So has East Detroit Bakery. So I do appreciate your efforts in going out and taking care of that. That was, I just definitely wanted to acknowledge that and let you know that I appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Ian for the training opportunities and letting us know about that as well. Thank you very much. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. I want it on the record that I was not the reason why council, or Commissioner comments have gone long tonight. But having said that, I have a list. What, you want a third bite at the apple? Go on.
Mr. Chair, I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping. I want to encourage you on a number of things. But one, we're moving minute-taking and minute processing in-house. So that we're not putting in another third party. We don't get it in the last couple of days prior to the next meeting. It'll come in-house. I'll take overseeing of that out of the building department. So we'll literally have this one within seven or business days of this meeting. It'll be done and ready. And we'll be able to chance to review it before it has to get before you by listing ourselves. So we'll be able to take care of that problem in-house because we took it off the third party. And that'll be, I think, a housekeeping that will be beneficial. As we go through, I will begin to bring you my strategical plans for the questions you're asking about garbage, about code enforcement, and about how we plan to go about cleaning up. I've already met with Ryan about some different mapping that we can plan. We don't have a large staff. In fact, the, we don't, staff that we're using right now, our shortened staff, is two part-times. They have both been here less than two months combined. So we're training on the fly. But encouragement, and with the technology we've brought since we've been here in the, what, the last three or four months, our code officers are averaging inputs of violations and corrections or follow-ups between 31 and 70 a day because of how we're being able to put the tables in. So that'll increase that side. We'll still have to increase the staffing. We don't really have anybody at the moment on a Friday yet in our coding vision that we'll have to make. Won't tell that part. Okay. Anyhow, we'll give you the details of all the rest of what we're trying to do. So you know that we're building to the, a future. My biggest challenge isn't getting people to correct. It's changing the culture of behavior. And once we get the, the village together and they understand we're not backing down and we need a healthier, safer, warmer, cleaner place. Once the city knows that, we'll see it happen on our back. But it's changing culture. What we've done started by changing the culture inside the building department.
Get ready to be called petty by a number of residents. Okay. So just a side note, slightly humorous. If you want more code enforcement people, maybe you should pay them by commission. You may be amazed how quickly this city will get cleaned up. They might be making more than city administration at that point. As far as cleanliness, both of you, all of you are correct about the cleanliness. And I do want to give a shout out to a hotspot. Big Lots is gone. The back of the building is absolutely filthy. I think they threw everything in the, in the alleyway. I understand they're a bankrupt company. I don't know if they own the building. And if they don't own the building, I hope you go after the building owner something fierce. And if there were city trucks back there cleaning up with all the rain and the nastiness, it's, it's going to be rat heaven. So Big Lots is a major issue. This, so the community lost a lady a couple of days ago, Sue Fancet and her partner, Dania. Dania passed away. And I bring this up because they love their community. And it's a loss. And I think that we need, you know, we don't always talk about these things. And you didn't necessarily know Dania, but the fact that she was integral in the community is always sad. So I, my heart goes out to her partner. As far as all the construction going on right now, I cannot encourage the residents enough, support the businesses that are being impacted by all of this construction. Because these businesses aren't getting tax breaks. They're not getting any assistance from anybody. Their businesses are being hurt badly. If you decide that you're not going to go to Tim Horton's on Nine Mile because you don't want to do it, so you're going to go over to Roseville. Or if you're fed up with trying to turn into East Detroit Bakery and you go to somebody else. So support the businesses that are being impacted by construction because there's a whole lot of business on Grashit that are going to be really torn up to. So please make sure you are supporting those businesses. My last comment is more of a personal one. I have an issue with bad actors. I have an issue with people that say one thing and don't follow through. So a marijuana ordinance is, is being put forward. That's fine. But a couple of the individuals in, that are going to partake of the bounty have had years to do something. And they have done nothing. They waited for a friendly counsel. They waited for things to change with Laura. And now they are reaping the benefit. But they have tied up real estate for years and have done nothing. I have a problem with bad actors. I have a problem with people saying that they're going to do one thing with the parking lot and don't doing it, don't do it at all. And you have no idea how happy I am right now that you're telling me that we are now in a situation where we will have a legal process to work through these violations. I do not like bad actors. And if somebody is a bad actor and they come before me, I will channel my inner Jeff Lu back. I have gotten to that point. I will try and be nice, play bright, be transparent and be fair. It's all I want. That's all I hope for, I should say. It's not about what I want. It's what I hope for. So with that, it is 8 o'clock. Can we get a motion to close the meeting?
Did you purposely talk till 8 o'clock exactly?
That was my plan.
Support?
We have motion. Do we have, oh.
I'm sorry, who motioned?
Mary made the motion.
And I support.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Na, Mrs. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. And Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Good night, everybody.